Yeah.
Be tabled, right? What we just talked about.
Yeah, I didn't know that deal.
They're still checking.
I wasn't participating in it. Our plan originally was.
I remember seeing on a bite.
Yep.
Welcome, everyone. I'm glad everybody got out of the rain. Is it still raining?
Yep.
Is it raining out there?
Yeah.
Good.
Barely.
Is it raining?
We need a little rain. We need a little rain. Gene, I'm surprised you guys aren't in Bermuda or someplace, huh?
We never go anywhere.
You never go anywhere, do you? Okay. Anyway, let me, uh, let me get back to work here. All right, I'd like to open up the Larnesburg Board of Works meeting for October 6, 2025. Mr. Fetty, can I get a roll call?
Yeah, we got Board Member Tom Urlet.
Present.
Board Member Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Wilton.
Here.
President Kelly Milan.
Here.
And myself.
All right, uh, entertain a motion. Uh, any, any, uh, I have no announcements for this particular meeting, guys.
I have none, Mayor.
That's it.
If not, then entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, new business, Mr. Cook. We got the Ludlow Hill Park Trailhead Parking Lot Bid Award, and that way Lenny will quit asking about it.
Yeah, we're getting started on it. So, uh, here today to present the pricing, uh, for the Ludlow Hill Park Trailhead Parking Lot. This will be a new trailhead, uh, parking lot to provide access to the future Ludlow Hill Park Trails off of, uh, Bel Air Drive. Uh, we requested pricing. We received two quotes back. And after reviewing, we'd like to recommend the low responsible quote from Cincinnati Asphalt at a total price of one hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Um, and then just to note that if this is approved, we'll be funded from our park's capital line. And also to note that this project is partially funded by the Indiana Trails Program Grant.
Yeah, we got a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from Indiana Trails, uh, that we've got to use. Uh, but just so you guys know, this is for the parking lot only.
Right.
Um, we're continuing to get more information and design for the trail itself down to the park. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, question about the, the design for the, uh, trail, the walking trail? You're not going to have a backyard where people are walking like a figure eight where they can run into each other, are we? I'm just saying.
Only you, Lenny. Tony?
I'm just asking.
Tried. I've really tried.
Did he play golf today?
Moving on, Mayor.
Yeah.
I have some questions, if I may.
Is it Ed Sunburnt?
Go ahead, Tommy.
How many parking spots will this have?
This will have six parking spaces, one handicap.
You did show me that rendering the other day.
Yes, sir.
Also landscaping, are we going to landscape this so where it doesn't just like, like a parking lot around?
It'll be kind of in a wooded area, um, but we can internally definitely, you know, put some, put some landscaping or some bushes or whatnot around it for sure.
Yeah, we can add that to Stacy's list, Tommy.
Yep.
Okay. Just one, I didn't, I just didn't want it to be a blightin' parking lot where someone give us an easement, you know what I mean? Just don't make it look like it's just something that Lenny made up.
I could, I could put something nice up there.
All right, that's all I have, Mayor.
Ferris wheel.
Ferris wheel.
Brett, you got anything?
Oh, will this be lit?
Um, we do not have any, uh, lights back there, no. So it'll be.
We can, we can look into that.
Yeah.
When we do, we can put it as part of the trail, the, 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 the second piece of the project. That's not a bad idea. Put a light or two back there. As long as it doesn't interfere with the residents back there.
Yeah.
It's not a.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want it to shine right in somebody's window.
Well, the park's closed at ten anyway, so you really don't want that. Maybe if you did put a light, it would be shut off in.
Yeah, we could do that too, timer, on a timer. Yeah, okay. Okay, this is, so this is for the parking lot only. The recommendation is for Cincinnati Asphalt at a price of a hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Any motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I'll second, Mayor. This is Board of Works, Mr. Fryman. He has been.
When you're talking about the park, I'm thinking, yeah, I'm ready.
Mayor, can you do something?
I made that, I made that motion.
This is ten minutes of my life I can't get back.
Never. I'll second that motion.
Oh, Lord. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't know where I was at. I'm in.
Motion's carried. Uh, you, you're done. Okay, uh, no other new business for Board of Works tonight, guys. I have no other, no old business either. I'll get a motion to adjourn this, this particular meeting.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, folks. Next.
Yeah.
Okay, next, uh, I'd like to call to order the Larnesburg Utility Board meeting for Oc- October 6, 2025 with a roll call, please. But before we do that, I, I want to introduce a, a gentleman because he needs to be part of the roll call. Down to my left, not Lenny.
I tried.
But the younger gentleman down there, uh, Mr. Rob Schneider. He is our new utility director for Larnesburg Municipal Utilities. Uh, on the job for a total of, what, six total days now?
Yep.
Seven days, maybe? Uh, so he's drinking out of a fire hose, but so please be, be nice and.
He hasn't quit yet.
He hasn't quit yet? But, uh, uh, this particular meeting, he's observing and things, uh, and then it'll be all his come in two weeks, so. Anyway, but this is the gentleman that, uh, will get out into the public and, uh, let the public know who's turning on, off our light switches, make sure the water's running.
And we'll give you all his phone number when the lights go out.
Oh, absolutely.
Already have.
That way they can lose mine.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Glad to have you aboard.
Yeah, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you all.
Yeah, absolutely. We're excited about Rob, so.
Yes, we are.
It's going to be a, a good, good ride.
Right on.
And he's young.
Yeah.
Younger.
Younger.
Okay. All right, so, uh, can I get a roll call, Mr. Fetty?
All right, we got Board Member Tony Abbott.
Here.
Board Member Dylan Little.
Present.
Present.
Board Member Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Board Member Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Wilton.
Here.
President Kelly Milan.
Here.
Kelly Milan, Utility Director Rob Schneider.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, uh, I have no announcements for tonight, um, that I can think of. Uh, obviously, um, the weather hasn't changed any. It's still hot and everything. Uh, um, hopefully that, uh, we'll see a, a change in, in weather pattern here and start getting some fall weather and, uh, maybe all of our electric bills will go down a little bit more. But, uh, anyway, uh, other than that, uh, can I, uh, get an approval for the minutes of the previous meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mayor, we got the second, September 2nd meetings you didn't.
I did not.
Yeah. Last week, or last meeting, you guys, guys did not approve the September 2nd meeting minutes.
I don't have the minutes.
Uh, they were in your packet. You just ran over them.
We just ran over.
I think Mr. Fryman confusion, you didn't do the.
No, I don't have them in my.
Packet, but it would have been your last packet. Oh, okay. She even noted that duly in the minutes from this past meeting, that the meetings.
September 2nd.
Yes.
All right.
No, he didn't pass them.
Was that, do, do you remember if that was a work session or was?
No, it was your, you guys didn't approve the September 2nd utility minutes in your September 15th meeting.
Oh, the.
They've already been presented to the.
Presented and everything, and they were in your packet.
You can just get a motion and.
Okay.
Just get a motion, accept September 2nd minutes.
All right, can I get a motion to, uh, approve the September 2nd, uh, minutes?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now can I go forward?
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
I'm just, I'm just the meaning.
I know you did.
Wait, hey, where's, uh?
See, it's not just me.
Utility Director tops for like five minutes or something. Isn't he?
I, I don't know what to do.
Maybe he wants to say something.
Probably not.
After what he's heard already, I'd be.
Yeah, he probably doesn't want to be part of this. You said he hadn't quit yet, Tony. It might be tomorrow morning.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah.
Got to keep Lenny away from him.
I, well, we can move chairs.
He's in good hands down here.
He'll be ready next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyway, the next item you see under new business says Eric Webster, but Eric couldn't make it tonight. What that is, is, uh, just a request. They, uh, they've got a new bucket truck that, uh, or they, they want to request to go out for bids for a new bucket truck. I got a call from Rodney and, and Eric, uh, about a week ago, I guess. Motor blew up. And then, but that was the same bucket truck that we, we've been having trouble getting passed through the, uh, whatever that.
Certification.
Certification for the lift.
Yes.
So, uh, it probably was good timing for that, but, uh, all I want is, uh, the ability for Eric to go out for bids, Eric and Rob, uh, to go out for bids for the, the new bucket truck.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it, but Mayor, I will add to that. I did speak with Eric and Amish and also with that same apparatus, the regen for the exhaust is out. Uh, it's, I guess it's on its way out, so that's an additional. Yes, so all in all, you got three things wrong with this individual truck.
Okay. Good time to, good time to.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Put it in.
You second this?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Rob, if you could let Eric know tomorrow morning that, to go out and get us three bids and we'll.
Yes, sir.
Figure it out. Okay, uh, I have no other new business nor old business for utilities. Anybody? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, review and discuss the claims for board approval.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve all payroll reports and checks once properly certified.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion ca- carries and a motion to adjourn this particular meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Before we start, I want to remind people at 6:15, we got to have a, uh, a public hearing on the 2026 budget, so wherever we're at in the meeting process, we'll, we'll pause it, so. So right now, I'd like to call to order the, uh, city council meeting for October 6, 2025. If everybody could stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One more time, Mr. Fetty.
Councilperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
Councilperson Dylan Little.
Present.
Councilperson Tom Urlet.
Present.
Councilperson Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Councilperson Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Wilton.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Milan.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, uh, board reports, streets, alleys and curbs. Downtown, Mr. Abbott.
Could we do announcements first, Mayor?
Oh, yeah, you can do, that's what I'm doing.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought we did the regular announcements. I had some announcements, is what I was saying, if I could real quick.
You can, you can do it now or?
Okay, I just thought that was first and then board reports. I'm sorry. Under announcements, uh, I would just like to acknowledge that we have a person within the city that is part of the woman of distinction, uh, out of Mark's office. So she's up, Suzanne Webster.
Yes.
And the other thing I'd like to bring up, I was approached in May when we were replacing the, uh, marker sign on the levee for Whitewater Canal, and I had an individual ask me if we could put some pictures back down at Todd Creek's Park. Chick Swing and, uh, Pat O'Neill, or Pat O'Neill, yeah, were missing. And I want you to know that Ashley went and found those pictures through the sign store and has those signs in place, those pictures in place. So the sign store had those in their possession, their archives. Yep.
No kidding?
Yep, so I'm going to try to get a copy of them as well, but kudos to Ashley. She, I showed her a picture that Mike Swing had given me a chick, and she took that to, to Marty, and Marty says, I got him. So I, I was very impressed. So those pictures are up now too as well.
Two pretty impressive individuals, actually.
Yes, yes, that's, uh, Ashley took it, man, and she ran with it, and I had to do no more. I was impressed, so. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Anybody else have any announcements before I go forward? I got a couple to do, but I'll wait till after streets, alleys and all. So, streets, alleys and curbs, downtown, Mr. Abbott.
Downtown is looking great with the new streets, new pavings on, all done. Uh, they're getting ready to stripe it all.
This week?
This week, which I don't, I don't know if we really need striping myself in residential areas. I think we could do without it.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, they're.
Parking spots?
They're all striped for 1967 Cadillacs, and we got little bitty economy cars now. We could cut, get a couple more spots, so next time around, maybe we'll think about not striping.
Okay.
But other than that, I spoke with Austin, there's some of the sewer lids, especially on West High, are down below the pavement pretty good, and he said they're going to do a walkthrough, and the ones that are down low, they'll put a ring around them and raise them up.
It's in the bid. They're in the bid.
Yep.
They did all manholes and valve boxes.
Now, the manholes right now, they haven't done them yet.
But I'm saying that whenever they do that, if you look at the bid, that is in the bid for them to do that.
So they're yet to do that.
Yeah, they come back in and they cut them and concrete them, is what they do.
All right, and this spring, I asked for the curbs to be fixed where the snow plows got them. They haven't been fixed yet.
Okay.
And we're getting ready for snow plows coming up again.
Do you have specific spots, Tony?
Oh, my heavens. Ashley has a list.
Yeah, somebody has a list because.
Well, I know that, I know that, okay, if she's got a list, then I, I, they must be waiting on.
Down by BP in there is really bad.
They, if they, if she's got the list, I know that it's on their list.
Yes, it is. Uh, I actually spoke with her sooner and they redid our last snow removal, and I seen that, and they went out and started.
Okay.
Soon as it thawed.
Tony, I'll.
She's got a list.
I'll get that. I'll, I'll, I'll talk to them in the morning about it.
All right.
Make sure that doesn't get forgotten.
I say I like getting them done before we have to snow plow again. It won't be long.
Or we wait till next year.
Might as well wait.
Right when you ask for next year.
Yeah.
Do them next year. How about putting some little flags on each curb too before it snows, maybe?
That or take their time when they're taking that front end loader, not jamming it.
Yeah.
How about we just don't get any snow?
That's not going to happen.
Oh, it's not going to happen?
Moving on.
It's going to be snowing a lot this, uh, winter.
Okay.
But other than that, for downtown, everything's good.
All right, streets, alleys and curbs, up on the hill, Mr. Fryman.
All good, thank you, sir.
What about the finance department, Mr. Bondurant?
All good, sir.
Fetty doing okay?
Fetty does a pretty good job.
Okay.
Your honor, there is, there was one other thing I might have mentioned. I brought up before, the railroad, uh, lights, the poles. I mean, we've done a good job of putting signs up and poles and everything in our city, but those railroad poles look like they're from 1800. They're nothing but rusted. They haven't been painted in 20 years.
All we can do is make an, uh.
Yeah, if somebody could give them a call and ask them if they could do something with their poles.
6:15.
Oh, yeah.
They look pretty bad.
Oh, all right. Are you done? I'll put it on my list too.
I think I'm done now.
Okay.
Maybe.
I'd like to pause, uh, pause at 6:17 for the, uh, public hearing of the, uh, 2026 budget. If anybody from the public has anything to remark about the budget, uh, upcoming budget, it's been published.
Published, yes. We had a work session on it, um, open work session.
Yeah.
So those questions, several questions were answered and changed and, uh, these are the final numbers, so, and once again, it was all published, and plus you can get on Gateway and look at it too. It's published in Gateway, too.
All public information, so.
The only thing that I want to add is, so from our last work session, for anyone that has watched it, and thank you, Mark, for taking my call today and answering these questions. Um, the general fund increased by like six thousand dollars. EMS lit also, uh, well, sorry, public safety lit increased by roughly, yeah, thirty-two thousand dollars, and then MDF increased by, um, one dollar. So those are the only changes that are in there, but everything that we asked, uh, was taken out.
The one-dollar thing was the rounding thing, and I.
Yeah, I wondered.
It's just the way that Gateway put it in there and it rounded up, mine rounded down, and it was, you know, it was a rounding thing. But the other one was, uh, the, the, the public safety lift, I told you.
Right.
The part-time firefighters.
Part-time firefighter.
The other was the.
And it was the 457.
7B. Yep, got it.
So thank you for taking my call today and answering these questions.
Thank you for taking my call. I want to ask you if you look at.
So anybody in the audience has free rein over the podium if you'd like to speak about budget?
I have a question. I have a question. Just occurred to me. In, uh, Patricia, y'all know me. Uh, in the past, the city of Larnesburg very kindly and generously would give the residents a month of free utilities, which I think started during COVID. Right? Isn't that what prompted the free month, which is very nice? But I, my question is, I'm not sure, are you going to continue that or is that something that we don't really need anymore?
Well, we, good question. It is not in 2026 budget.
Okay.
And the reason is, it's sort of something that we evaluate every year, year to year. It's not something we want people to plan on, but when we are able to do it, we want people to be able to appreciate it.
The other thing that I want to add is, originally when that started, they were using ARPA funds, so the American Rescue Plan dollars that came down from the federal government, that's how that started, and that's where that money was used for.
Well, uh, yeah, I mean, I mean, like I said, I love it, but if it's putting a burden on the city, we don't, we don't want to do it.
And it's not the city so much, it's, uh, you actually, you know, utilities in the city are two separate entities, so.
Well, that's true.
Now, in the past, what we've done is that we did a gift to the, to the utilities.
Okay.
To help.
That's all I wanted.
They pay for it, so the ratepayers aren't paying for it.
Okay.
So it came out of gaming dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, uh, at 6:20, we'll close the public hearing. And I'd like to open up, uh, back the, uh, city council meeting for October 6, 2025. And we are currently at Parks and Playgrounds, Mr. Little.
Parks and Playgrounds look good. Um, want to give the city workers a shout out for the landscaping going on at all of the different parks. It looks really good. Brad, so if you could let those guys know, I, I appreciate it.
Okay, uh, are you finished?
Yep.
Okay, I have something under parks that I wanted to bring up last minute. I wasn't here. Uh, when we did the rental of the pavilion at the pool that Mr. Abbott was very adamant about. I got a chance to look at this, uh, documentation, and I have a few questions. First of all, if you go down there where the pavilion is at, it actually states, and I have a picture of it, it's not, we, I don't think we should name it Tate Street Pool Pavilion. It actually has.
Tate Street Recreation.
Recreation.
There you go. Tate, that's what I.
That was the old name of the building down there.
Right, and it's on the side of the building, so people would know that's where you're going, so I would just would like to ask that we maybe consider changing that name of that. So people don't think, well, I'm renting the pool. No, you're renting the pavilion next to it, which is the Tate Street Recreation Pavilion. That's all I'm saying. That's just my thoughts. Uh, the second thing I had is the renters insurance, where they have to have a million to two-hundred thousand per occurrence. Is that, is that normal?
Different sites, yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, but the individual has to go get this, so it doesn't bankrupt it. It's just a normal.
Well.
I think it's. We don't do that for Agnor Hall, do we?
Good question, because we, basically, you guys said you wanted the same thing as the Agnor Hall.
It's in here.
But somehow it got put in there, and I don't know how it got put in there.
I, I think I suggest that, because that's the site.
Yeah, well, my question is.
Well, that wasn't voted on.
We never do that.
Well, yes, it was, because when you guys.
Not to add that on, that's to go after Agnor.
Okay, you guys have, everybody has this policy.
Not somebody that rents.
Right.
You approved this policy.
Then they have, have insurance.
Okay.
We didn't approve.
We didn't approve it.
Oh, guys.
We approved that we would copy Agnor Hall.
Okay.
That's what we, that's what we voted on, to, uh, go after Agnor Hall, not no additions on it.
Okay, well.
I would suggest that we leave the insurance in there and add it to Agnor Hall, because I mean, we, they have to provide insurance.
That's why I'm asking, so this, and just, do you think this is a ten-dollar policy or a twenty-five-dollar policy?
About a hundred-dollar policy.
Hundred-dollar policy.
Yeah.
But, but to get that for like a, you know, for a day, you know?
Okay.
Day of the day. The, where, where I think it really, uh, it, it, I, I didn't realize it wasn't in Agnor Halls.
It, it is not.
No, it's not. It's in this one, though.
Sites, sites is, sites would tell us that they should have it.
Because it pretty well states right in there, you have to show proof of that insurance before you get the key. It's spelled out in it.
Well, and that, and that, my fault, I didn't know that it was.
That's why I'm bringing this all up.
Does, does anyone else make you get insurance, specific insurance, like Greendale Cabin or?
I have no idea.
And the other places?
No.
I've never, I've never heard of having to do that. Never heard of that.
Well.
It's in here.
For every event we have, every vendor has to come and, and list us as an additional insured in order to protect us.
Yeah.
I, I like it.
It's no different than somebody renting our spaces.
Okay, last but not least, and I'll leave.
Let me, let me, let me talk to that. The reason it really makes good sense to do at the pool, cause you got that water there. Anything can happen. I know everybody says, oh, there's an eight-foot fence, you know?
When people are.
When people are down there and if they're drinking or carrying on, you don't know what's gonna happen over that eight-foot fence. And then, I just, I, I don't know, I.
One thing that I want to ask is, they can get this insurance from anywhere. It's not just sites that they.
No, they don't.
We don't make them get it through sites.
We don't care. We can't tell them what, really, yeah. We just, yeah.
But is the same price everywhere?
I don't know.
A million dollar policy?
I don't know that. I don't know, I can't say, I can't say.
It's like a hundred bucks. You, you, I mean, you could, you could lower the rental fee by a hundred if you wanted to.
That's what I was gonna say. Maybe let's, let's find out how much it is and maybe we might adjust the rental fee.
Well, people need to start.
They still have to get the insurance.
That's why I brought this up. So, nobody, people's not bringing this up and not reading.
Well, yeah, I, I think it's important that if you guys want to put this in the Agnor Hall thing, that basically you guys let, let me know. So, we basically are following the right procedures over there.
Yep.
I really thought it was already, so I'm.
I seen it and I highlighted, but I wasn't at the last meeting to bring it up. Okay, can I move on to the next one?
Well, let's put some closure to that.
Yeah, let's, I, I, I'm kind of with you. I agree with you. Let's get some closure from that.
We're gonna include it in Agnor Hall. Agreed?
Agreed.
Yeah.
Are we gonna reduce the price by a hundred bucks then?
I don't like that idea. We're already losing money.
I, exactly. I'm not in favor of that.
When we rent those places.
I'm not. It's, it's a hundred dollars. I mean, you're having a reception or whatever.
I, I do know this.
I like the liability part of it.
I think it's six hundred and fifty dollars to rent the cabin.
Yep, yep.
Greendale Cabin?
Mm-hmm.
If you're not a Greendale resident, that's correct.
It's four fifty.
But if you're a Greendale residence, I thi- if you're a Greendale resident, I believe it's two fifty, unless it's changed.
Four fifty, you think? Maybe, I don't know. Maybe you're right.
I don't know.
I'll tell you what I'll do. I will find out what these insurance policies cost people.
Okay.
And it's, uh, we'd say a million dollars of umbrella, is a million dollars, five hundred thousand individual?
You got, uh, it's a one million per occurrence and two hundred per aggregate.
Two hundred?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I will also.
Two million, I'm sorry, mayor. It's one million and two million.
Okay.
I was like, two hundred thousand.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's check into this in the next meeting, go back with the information and.
That's why I looked into this. Okay, number eleven, you must adhere to the occupancy code per fire marshal. Do we have that down there where how many occupants are allowed?
Johnny did it.
Okay, so that is marked.
Yes.
Okay?
Yep.
I guess it, I'm good. I'm good.
We did ask, kind of screen, we'll do it quick, so.
I know we did. I know we did.
It went off real well too, didn't it?
Yeah, it did. It, I'll tell you what, I want to find, they had it set up. It looked good. I liked it.
I'll get that number from, uh, I'll, I'll call a couple of insurance companies and see what they charge for that.
And could we look at Greendale and see what they're charging for the cabin? And then if we have to do a non-residential versus residential rate, look at that and see what it looks like?
Yeah, we've never had a residential, non-residential.
Okay.
Mayor?
I'll do that.
I did just rent the cabin for my brother's death and we did not have to do a insurance policy.
Okay.
We had to do a non-resident because of being in Lawrenceburg.
Do you, do you know what that, that cost or?
I want to say, I had to put an eighty-five dollar deposit down and then my sister-in-law, of course, she paid for it. I want to say it was right around six hundred dollars.
Okay.
Between five fifty and six hundred. They did have it in the paper though, they were raising it this year.
They had it what?
They had it in the paper that they're raising the rate.
Okay.
So, it was on Facebook, I believe.
It's gotta be true.
Yeah.
It has got to be true, guys.
No, but we did not have to do an insurance or anything for it.
I have it pulled up here.
I'll call out there tomorrow.
It's online, two hundred for a resident, plus fourteen dollars tax, plus eighty-five deposit, so two ninety-nine if you're a resident. Non-resident is four hundred, plus twenty-eight dollars in tax and eighty-five dollar deposit, so five hundred and thirteen if you're a non-resident.
Good.
Well, let me ask you this, if, if we rent it out, excuse me, why can't we just have that included?
Because we can't get the insurance.
We can't do it? Okay.
No, they have to, they have to get the insurance.
Been nice to just do it all at one time.
What's that?
I said it'd be nice if we could just put it all at one time.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't want to go against our insurance carriers advice.
Nope.
We just went through the whole.
This is what happens when.
Whole exercise on every bit of our.
No one gets a chance to look it over.
Property liability and everything here, so I don't want to go back. I, I, I'll call around tomorrow, guy, find out. Okay, I forget where we're at.
Oh, that was under parks, mayor.
Yeah, what about you now, fire department, Mr. Roulette?
Congratulations to Mr. Termaine. I see he got citizen of the year.
Yes, he did.
Yes.
And did, how did he do that?
Cause he's gonna retire and we don't have to mess with him.
Yeah, I knew those something. Congratulations, kudos again.
Good reason.
Kudos to him.
No, good.
Gonna miss him. And I'm sure you have the proper, or the right people to replace him already.
Absolutely.
Good, good deal.
Uh, I can make the announcement.
Yeah, I don't know why you couldn't.
Lenny?
Pat Myers will be taking over as, uh, police chief of the Lawrenceburg Fire, uh, Fire Department, Fire Chief, I'm sorry. Sorry Snyder, if he's listening. Snyder's being replaced. Uh, but, uh, and then, um, Cody Ratliff will be deputy chief.
Good deal.
So, I'm excited, uh, they're excited. Um, I've talked to a number of the folks over that will be working under them. I think, uh, everybody's excited to see what's, what, what, what new things may come, come about.
They're very dedicated farming.
Yes, they are.
With them.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm, I'm excited about it.
Mayor, I know that was probably hard to go through the candidates.
No, but I'll tell you, I, what I appreciated was the, the interviews that I did do, uh, they were appreci- they were, they were very supportive of each other.
Good.
There was no.
Me, 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 I.
Yeah, none, none of that.
Good.
None of that, so.
Let me learn from that.
Thank you. Thank, thanks for bringing that up, Tommy. Okay, I got a couple of items I wanted to bring up. I wanted to let you know that, uh, Ludlow Hill Park has got, uh, the speed tables installed. Uh, they will be downtown and up on the hill on, uh, Thursday and Friday of this week, doing the rest of them that we've had identified. So, Tony, get in your way. You got everything but a fair as well. Uh, Todd Creach Pickleball Courts are supposed to start the end of this month, so that'll be a nice. I'll tell you what, the pickleball courts up on the hill are play, are on, filled up all the time, all the time.
Yeah, they've been, they've actually, we've been up there and they, they're waiting to get on.
Yeah, you were waiting?
Yeah, me, I, no, I usually jog five miles when I go up there.
Oh, he's just jogging, yeah, yeah. Uh, Trick or Treat.
Maybe I'll sell you a bridge.
Trick or Treat in Lawrenceburg will be on October thirty-first from six P to eight P. Uh, I believe it's Friday night this year. Uh, and then the city of Lawrenceburg Annual Trunk or Treat will be at Ludlow Hill Park on October the twenty-sixth from four o'clock to six. So, all of you die-hard Bengals fans can watch the one o'clock game.
Yeah.
Like we all want to endure.
Wouldn't miss it.
We really want to endure that, right? So, anyway, October twenty-sixth from four to six at the park up in Ludlow Hill.
Now, what happens if it's raining? I'm just saying, are we gonna move it like we did?
No.
Bring your umbrella.
Well, we probably would move it down to the, uh, parking garage. We got a thousand dollars of candy or whatever they bought.
I mean, that'd be something, you know, we didn't expect it last time and it happened, so.
Yeah.
Well, if we do that, you better make them move the boats and motorcycles and everything else that's in that garage.
We, we go through that garage every month.
Really?
Yeah.
They must move them for a day and bring them back.
Well, they're able to do that. It's just like the streets.
So, free parking garage.
That's what the code says.
Yep.
Yeah.
Tell you, when you tuck away the payment?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, well, we're good. Okay, uh, new business. Uh, we got, uh, Brad Massey and Rodney Quicksall here from the Civil City Garage. Uh, they want to, uh, ask for a new dump truck.
We've got the three bids in front of you guys.
They look good in their black shirts, guys.
Yes, they do.
Not with the name you call it.
That's the only thing.
I, I really.
You know who I am.
Yeah.
He does, but.
Yeah.
I am proud of you. Rodney, nice job. I know it was your idea to dress like that.
No, it wasn't.
I told Austin I'd wear a new one for him, but he ain't here, so.
I agree.
He's put as soon as.
What you got for us, guys?
Okay, uh, I've got three bids in front of you. We want to replace truck fifty-two, which is a two thousand F two, three fifty. Uh, we want to replace with a twenty twenty-five F three fifty, four-wheel drive, all decked out with the snow equipment, salt spreader and a nine-and-a-half foot plow.
For the no-snow we're getting.
Yes, I second that if you didn't hear me on the no-snow.
Yeah, I know you did.
Uh, the first bid came in from Hagford was one thousand two hundred and sixty, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Bid number two was Hubler Truck out of, uh, I believe it's Greensburg, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, one ninety, or nine sixty-five. Bid number three is from Airport Ford for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two twenty-five. Uh, we make the recommendation to use Hagford since they're local.
And they're lowest.
Yes, and they're lowest.
Brad, so, uh, hopefully in two weeks, we approve this budget.
Right.
In next year's budget for a hundred and twenty-five thousand out of, out of MDF Civil City Equipment. So, in two weeks, if you approve the budget, it's basically in the budget for next year, so we would not have to pay till, till next year.
Correct. We just want to get the order in prior to the end of the year. There will be no money spent in twenty twenty-five.
Question?
I have none.
I entertain a motion to approve, uh, a new dump truck to be purchased at Hagford at a hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for.
Thank you.
Carry of that, guys.
You're welcome.
Uh, guys, I have no other new business. And under old business, uh, I'm sorry. No, I didn't.
Tommy?
I got two of them to do too.
What?
Tommy's really screwing me up.
He's really messing up tonight, Tom.
Ask some questions that need to be asked.
Okay, can I get approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then can I get meeting minutes from nine seventeen's work session approved? Motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just waiting for Tommy.
No, I'm opposed.
Have I missed anything else, guys? I'm, I'm screwed up tonight. Sorry about that.
Lemon O'Meaglin.
I know. That's pushing the buck. All right, uh, old business, Dylan, we're gonna table the ordinance that we talked about in the work session, uh, till next time. Uh, comments from the audience?
Motion, motion.
Yeah, okay, motion to table, motion to table the ordinance establishing criteria for bidder for certain public works of project. Are you okay down there, Lenny?
I'm, I'm fine. He's, he's having a problem up here tonight.
He's rubbing off.
I'll make that motion, mayor.
Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Don't look at me.
Motion carries. Now, can I get comments from the audience?
There you go.
Thank goodness I got to this point.
You'll be fine.
Sorry, guys, about that.
Doing good, mayor.
Where do we read the ordinance? Where can I see that?
Come up to, come up to Mike, would you, Patricia?
So, you're wanting to, uh, establish a new ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
Where can I read that at?
Online. It's in.
It's not online yet. We're working on it.
Yeah, it's not.
It's not approved yet.
It's not approved.
Once it, once it's approved, you can read it online. All of our ordinances are available online.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is, this has still not been approved. We're, that's why we tabled it. Any other questions? I need to get through this meeting.
I second the motion.
I think it's my first meeting in ten years. Shakes up here, I don't know what's going on. Okay, uh.
Your honor?
Oh.
She missed the time. She.
Wait a minute, I do have a question.
Oh, we done passed that one?
Yeah.
Go ahead. No.
Can somebody add it to the budget to get a couple of fans in the community center?
Fans?
Fans?
Yeah. It's hotter than, oh, yeah, but it doesn't work in one room.
You're kidding. All of them you put in that.
Yeah, no, it doesn't work in the fitness room.
Have you even informed Richard of that?
Yeah.
Why is Richard not?
Is it hot?
Okay.
It's hot in the fitness room.
I'm only in there as soon as it opens.
When you walk out of the fitness room, it's like you walked into a refrigerator.
You know what you need to do? Go into the gym, because I freeze every winter.
I know it's freezing in there.
The gym is terrible.
Then maybe they could move all the exercise equipment into the gym.
Oh, no.
Not, not right before basketball season, Miss Jane.
Just in the, just in the. In the, in the weight room. You're talking about the weight room.
Well, where the bikes and stuff are.
Yeah.[1538.91]